And to get started, we have one member that zoomed in, Charles Evans. You all remember all of them, District One, and then the rest are here. So, there's a flag back there on that wall that we pledge allegiance to. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which is shaking back. One nation under God, in the best hope of liberty and justice for all. Rupert, you say the right sentence.
Yeah, I apologize for saying that. And the life that you've given us continues forward in great city. While we ask you to build the building on this moving forward. As we continue to talk to you with those guys and make the right decision. May we pray.
All right. Charles Evans, can you hear me, Charles? Are you there? I see, you may not hear us.
He's waving.
Okay, he's waving, alright. Deborah, the...
Here.
Okay. Miranda W., Cindy Dern, Rupert Vias, we are all here, so, good deal. I'm gonna take a second to debate between items four and five, just to say this. Celebrate secrets and honor all end. Well, then Rupert, you, your turn, thank you, all again, and Mr. Pearl.
I had nothing to add to that, man.
Huh?
I had nothing to add.
Yeah.
I don't know if they changed my name or who. Uh, mandate went off, though they are getting their things. Everything was incidentally out. Uh, one event, but we're getting there. But I mean, my name, thank you.
I think we're out there on.
Yeah, but I appreciate it. Those are the best, everybody was bringing down to do this and things like that. But what do we get, Angie?
Good. It was great, thank you, Gareth, I know you were involved in it.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Um, okay. On the next item on the agenda, this is approve the minutes, it's previous meetings, we have several, which got under four packets. Are there any questions about those?
So, one on July 12th. Um, since Shannon lost the vote, she was here.
No, she wasn't. She wouldn't have been here on July 1st. So, what we're doing, the record.
She was, because I was on vacation, she was, when she was.
Alright, thank you for talking. And you're ready to go. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings.
Last second, I have a second from Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if you can answer. Alright, thank you, folks. Now, we have our consent agenda, which is the various routine business items, accounts payable, all sorts of things. Are there any questions about the items you had?
I have consent.
If we want to talk, I have a question for Renee. So, do we do this now, or do we...
We'll go to new business.
Okay.
New business is towards the end. I have a question, so you can do this.
Okay.
Okay. Alright. So, um, any comments about consent agenda, the items there? No? Can I have a meeting to approve, or excuse me, a motion to approve consent? Make a motion to approve the thing I did. Rupert made the motion to approve consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Deborah, second, and all in favor, please sit up.
Aye.
I think we lost Charles, Jim, or something.
Aye.
Oh, he said, he said, I'm... Thank you, Charles.
I'm sorry, I don't...
Sorry, Deborah. Seven rook.
We'll do that, new business.
No, it's part of the...
Oh, second agenda.
I know there was an accident over there at that wastewater disaster. How much damage did it do to me? It was, I don't know, like...
About half of it.
No, it was not. It knocked the cement over about two inches and kind of worked the rails at the pump slide on. But we haven't really, the pumps are working, it's all working, it's supposed to. I don't know, they can stand, you know, we can't pump her out. We have to move closer.
That answer your question? Thank you. Okay. Now, we're in the present, the presentation of TDA Form A 1024 CTBG Section 3 Goals and Concepts as related to the CDBG program and grant contract number 7219401. This is the, and what they have here, the $400,000 FEMA grant we got, if I remember. And the change order we had to do very recently for the extra work on, what is it, 11th Street down here?
Um, it's, it's a CDBG grant, it's not FEMA.
Okay, it's not FEMA.
Yeah, it's a second part of that.
Right, and this is, you ever find us, this is the... We're, we're, excuse me, we were supposed to be joined...
I'm here, um, can you hear me, Mayor? This is Jerry Cudahy, the Grant Works.
Oh, Jerry, there you are, thank you.
Thanks.
So, uh, are you able to share the PowerPoint presentation with us?
Yes, I'll go ahead and make the presentations, and then after that, we'll need a motion to approve it. This is a new mandate that just came out from TDA. So, I'll go ahead and start the presentation, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Hey, the Texas Department of Agriculture, TDA, they have placed a statewide hold on all CDBG administration, engineering, and construction contractor payments until the grantees approve a Section 3 plan. This is just a new mandate that recently came out. Um, Section 3 refers to providing opportunities for low and very low-income persons, businesses, and contractors to participate in the CDBG funded projects through employment, provision of services, materials, and contracting. Uh, the Section 3 plan was prepared by TDA and revised by Grant Works to meet the town's needs. I'm actually, all this is after the fact, since the construction contract has already been awarded and Phase 1 of the water systems project has been completed. But TDA is still requiring the grantees to approve the Section 3 presentation. So, I'll go briefly over the presentation, and if you have any questions here, you can go ahead and ask me. Okay, the city received, uh, the following grant award, CDBG contract 7219401 in the amount of $400,000. It was for replacement of undersized water lines through the installation of 3,450 inner feet of six-inch DUC water lines. Uh, the grant is funded by the US Department of Housing, uh, Housing Urban Development through the Texas Department of Agriculture. HUD yearly gives, uh, TDA CDBG funds, and then TDA makes these funds available, available through competitions in each state planning area. The city applied in 2019, for 2019 program year, and you were funded for $400,000. Um, as a condition of funding, the city must comply with Section 3 of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968. Actually, the city has, has been complying, and I'll give that information here in a little while. And this is what compliance means to TDA as far as Section 3, what it means to the federal government. To the greatest extent feasible, grant recipients must direct economic opportunities generated by CDBG funds to low and very low-income persons. Section 3 businesses have the information, have to have the information to submit a bid or proposal for the project. But the city has complied, has already complied with this, uh, Section 3. The engineer during the, during the bidding phase, he submitted the, the bid documents to the, to the state planning rooms that were available to, uh, to small business contractors to bid on the project. The city has adopted a Section 3 plan. The bid documents were also sent to the below-listed websites, the HUD website, which is a historic, historically underutilized business website, the MWBE website, which is the Minority Women's Business Enterprise, and also the Texas Workforce Commission. So, also, the contractor, uh, Hoover Construction, he also prepared a Section 3 plan. And the contractor has also made efforts to, um, employ Section 3 workers, low-modern income workers. But, uh, contractors are not mandated to do this, they just have to make an effort. But historically, the CDBG projects have been small projects where the contractor already has his crew, and most small projects, uh, most contractors for small projects don't have the need to hire low-modern income workers from the city. Larger contracts by Texas Department and other federal agencies, they require that the contractor employ a certain percentage, a certain percentage of low-modern income persons. But TDA is only requiring that the contractor make an effort to. But since the project is already completed, but, in other words, Hoover Construction felt no need to hire extra workers, so. But, as I said earlier, the city, uh, we still have to bring this up for the city's adoption. Okay. Uh, a company may qualify as a Section 3, Section 3 business if it is owned and operated by low-income persons. It is owned by Section A assisted housing residents, or 75% of all labor hours for the businesses in a three-month period are performed by Section 3 workers. There's a website called, a Section 3 website, that, uh, that contractors could go to, or even, uh, like a, like a worker's com book could go up there and get certified as a Section 3 business. The, the project included the following grant administration services, which were previously, previously selected. Engineering services were also previously selected prior to the submission of the application. The prime contractor was Gate Utilities, that contract was awarded on December 14, 2020. He had three subcontractors, Tapmaster, Turkey Creek, and WA Paving. Also, at the end of the project, the contractor has to submit a, a Section 3 report. At that time, he'll tell, he'll tell us and the city, and the report, how many Section 3 workers he hired. But at this time, I don't think he hired any, uh, Section 3 workers or Section 3 contractors. Also, uh, a Section 3 worker can qualify as a worker if annual income is below the county's threshold for, for family size of one. Family size of one under the low-modern income limit is $14,050 a year. If they register with Workin Texas Gov, and also with a HUD Section 3 opportunity portal. Uh, let's see. And then, the city will track, if, if, in the event that there were Section 3 workers, Grant Works through the city would track the, the hours worked by each workers. All workers, all Section 3 workers, and all those Section 3 workers. This will be done when the prime contractor has to submit certified payrolls listing each employee. If he has Section 3 workers, he has to list the employees, and based on the certified payrolls, the weekly work, uh, periods, we can track the workers. So, that can be done if needed. And, that's it. Now, do you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Pearl?
We had access to this before tonight.
Yeah, I had distributed this, Gary, to everybody, so they've had a chance to go over it.
Right.
We were asked to pass a resolution.
We just approved the, we just approved the presentation, that's all DDA's asking for.
If we, if we can have a motion to approve the presentation, we understand that we've been informed. And then another agenda I have is, uh, related to this, but, uh, right now, it's just a, a motion please to accept the presentation, uh, by doing so, saying that we understand the information. May I have a motion and signify, resolve this presentation?
I make a motion to...
Present a statement of motion?
Solve this presentation.
I, I have one question. If, if they placed a hold on it, why are we proceeding?
We, uh, got the change here. And you might be able to explain this better.
Okay.
Change orders, correct me if that's something.
How does Jerry get out?
This is to do as...
Jerry, the, sorry. Jerry, the, the, the grant administration process, the contractor needs to be paid. The contractor sends a, a payment request to the engineer, an application for payment. An application for payment is signed by engineer, approved, it's approved by, by the mayor, or Dan, and then it's submitted to Grant Works. We prepare the reimbursement documents and send them to TDA. TDA reviews the reimbursement documents, if everything's okay, they'll send a, a payment to the city. Then the, they'll send a payment to the city, to the controller's office, and the city will write the checks to the contractors. At this point, um, we have no pending, uh, we have no pending draws, as we call them, or payment requests, they haven't been paid. But the contract is, we're working right now on, uh, with the city, on a modification to the contract with TDA to, uh, do additional line work in the same area. There will be a time that the contract will need to be paid. So, if this is, if this, uh, Section 3 plan is not in place, then TD will, they won't make the payment until the presentation is approved.
Thank you, Jerry. Can I have a second? Okay, Deborah, a second. All in favor? May I? Okay.
Well, I was leaving, aye.
Okay, we got you, thank you, Charles. Okay, so, that's going to go forward.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thanks for knocking in. Okay, item A, Resolution 21113 Alpha, Award Administrative Service Proposal for the ARP Grant Funding. As, as you know, we've got one to end of the American Rescue Plan, $360,000. We already have the cash. Um, there, there's four main uses for that money. There are significant strings attached to it. Uh, we felt like it was a good idea to have a grant administrator. Dan put out, and had in the paper, the proposals. We have two firms that I remember that answered them, Dan scored them. Um, one was slightly less than the other, a wiser, creative. So, uh, the resolution I'm asking you to consider is authorizing professional service, service provider selection for the American Rescue Plan Act programs. Whereas participation in the American Rescue Act program requires implementation by professionals in the experience, experienced in the administration of family-funded projects. Whereas in order to identify qualified and responsive providers for the service and question proposal process for administrative services and complete, completed in accordance with federal requirements. Whereas if proposals received by the TDA have been reviewed, determine the most qualified and responsive providers for each professional service, giving consideration to the ability to perform successfully in terms of condition of post, current integrity, compliance with public policy, record of past performance, and financial and technical resources. Now therefore being resolved, Section 1, that public manager is selected and provide project-related administrative services for the ARP Act program. Section 2, that any and all project-related service contracts or commitments made with the above-named service providers are dependent on a successful negotiation of contract and service supply. So, that's the resolution I'm asking you to pass. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the resolution to authorize professional service providers to administer our ARP Act program.
Okay. I have a motion.
A second.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so it's public management, Dan, also in any necessary. Okay? Alright. Okay, now we have a discussion in public meeting, open forum, to discuss concerns and impact on the community facility to be financed through the USDA Community Facilities Program. Perkins is here. Are you up there, Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
There you are. And, uh, Mr. Pelletier, Mr. Pelletier is here as well, he's sharp. So, um, I'll turn, Mr. Perkins, I'll turn first part of this over to you.
Okay. Yeah, it's good to be with you, uh, this afternoon or this evening.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I'll try to speak up. Uh, so basically, we need to have a public meeting, uh, to discuss the, the project and just give the public a chance to comment on it, and then we take a look at the comments. So, um, just basically to talk about, uh, the USDA program, uh, we're looking at, uh, it, it looks like somewhere around, uh, $1.2 million loan. We, we would use an interest rate of 2.25% and a term of 40 years. So, that's, uh, that comes to a $45,816 loan payment each year. So, that, that's basically what we're looking at. Um, USDA would, would like to get this approved, uh, this month. Our, our funding runs out the end of this fiscal year, at the end of this month. So, um, i- if we don't get it funded, uh, this month, then we're probably looking at December or January before funding.
Why?
Okay. For those in the audience, let me throw this in, uh, as a condition, uh, of the, uh, the USDA loan for the sewer wastewater project, the $4 million loan, in the process of getting. We had to meet certain conditions, and this council agreed to those in April 2020. We agreed then, shortly after I took office, and that involved meeting the federal American Disabilities Act requirements for our, uh, city, and was not meeting any of your requirements. Um, we have an architect that Dave saw, Mr. Pelletier there, and he is, uh, signs and plans. He also looked at the existing building, see what he could do with that, and, and he did a possible comparison. And then, it turned out they're about the same, not the same. The unknown is, we don't know what else might be wrong with it. It was a 50-year-old building, so, this council decided to go ahead, it's the same dollar back. We decided to go ahead and build a new, so they landed it on my client, the current. And that's like a $1 million-ish loan requesting from USDA, it's all valid. We have three years to apply. Requirements of that, fair, why, can, dissolve that, federal attorneys. Just doing what they... So, does that seem like a fair roundup, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, from what I could, uh, hear, that, that sounds about right.
So, does anybody have any questions? Nobody's raising their hand, so how long do you want this to go?
Sir?
You want to go to a quarter after seven, just to see if anybody cuts in? Does the party of the public hear you, you have a line down this way?
No, I, I don't.
No, and we did publish, we have published notice in the newspaper, advising everyone that this opportunity to express their concerns or to ask questions about the project was available. So, as there apparently are now concerns or questions, I think we can log. And the council, and I would, we revamped the project significantly to reflect both the interest, safety funds we can have on factory, and the spare excess wastewater provision, white wastewater, excess, um, clean waters, revenues we got. So, we, we are confident we can pay for this, our existing budget. We aren't, um, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Perkins, is it Sam?
Yeah.
We, we admitted what we're saying. We're confident we can pay for this, and we did not raise the taxes. They're below the, no new taxes, tax rate. So, we've got the budget significantly to do that, 30%, all non-employment lines. So, certain funds, confidence. Alright, Mr. Markman, I saw your face. You have a comment?
Afternoon, uh, just a quick question. The location of where the facility will be built, will it just, will we, uh, build behind? Or how will that work? That's, that's my only question.
It's going through, on the corner, uh, just west and north, on that same block of the current city hall. Right behind the peace guards on that block, that's where it's going to be built. There are drawings, you're welcome to see them at some point, that shows what the building looks like. I know that there's still an active design process in place, um, to get things out of the way they need to be, but, um, we have a schematic of what the building is going to look like. It will just be a city hall. Uh, our hope is that we'll have a kiosk, so that we can have driver's drive-through. Uh, and that's part of our code prevention, uh, methodology. It's going to have a bigger chamber, council room, it's going to have some office space in there. It's going to have better work area for Dan and Angie and Tammy as well. We're just going to go cow rap. But then, that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Markman, I appreciate it. Are there any other comments or questions? Since there is no time definition, Perkins, I, I think we can call this, uh, public hearing closed, unless you have an objection.
No, that sounds good. Thank you.
Right. We've met all the squares, you need to just convene with this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Dan, and thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. We don't have to take any action afterward, Dan, so no, okay. Alright, now, we have an agent, that's the next agenda. What'd he say? I think he's talking to somebody, oh, background, okay. Alright, we have an agent report, and that agent report is about 66,000 dollars liquid, liquid water bills. One in particular is substantial, but Renee's looking into that for us, that may be a mistake. But many of these on the agent report are from 2019 and prior, so some of the four is in. And they're discontinued accounts. What Dan and I chatted about is having Renee and Angie actually look through the list, see what, based on their knowledge of customers we serve and the, and the, their knowledge about, are they still here, have they moved off the family? Our collection efforts, they don't have one. And Renee has indicated to me she's willing to do it, Angie, I believe is willing to do it. And that way they can bring us a report at the next main council meeting and make a recommendation to what we can write up. When you have all these accounts receivable, they're listed as assets. And well, they're not, we're not likely to ever cut your bad debt. So. I'd like, I'd like us to consider that, I think that be a motion that we allow Renee and Angie to review them and make a recommendation to us at their, at our next meeting or nearest possible time they can. This is very important. It's very important, I mean, a lot of our public gets to be funded, so you need to know that. I mean, we need to stay on topic, getting all the water due.
Then I've seen a few of them over here, I can't convince me that, but they do still.
Well, and those would be ones we try to, and there may be payment plans, and we can work with people who have hard times. Particularly, a lot of people are having hard times. Water revenue is very important to us, in terms of paying our bills. So I make a motion that we need to, that those are important. And I appreciate your motion, what makes it really good right now is we're about closing this. So it would be a good way to tidy up our books for 21, 22. Obviously. I have a motion. What is it, 20 days long?
Six, six, seven.
Oh, 57, just forgets, we see, no. And I have a second, Renan, all in favor? Okay, I see that, thank you. Okay, this is your end on discussion, any actions necessary, commute on citywide cleanup.
Yes. The strike side, the F B A department has contacted me, and this is what I delayed it. And they are clinging to, if any pages, the front bar about last time, you know, they're. And when I, yes. Anyway, they don't want to go down town because they are going to be using school people, drivers. They just wanted to get out, they, athletes, these kind of, these 20 women who are. And that, they asked if we would be a sponsor to that specific secret or something there because they want to, they want us to have the roll offs. They want us to comprise, take them calls from the people who has to have a name and address. And they would come, you know, they would divide it up between the coaches, it's going to have a certain number of kids. And then the assembly of God is going to be them afterwards. You know, anyone that can tell, if you do have to pick up in a trailer, we said that would be great, because we think who divide the name kids. Because I know the school, I think that like more pickups, more trailers, so if there is something, it would have. One or two. He said, you know, even like where the people have called in, that's why he wants it advertised. I've made a copy of the S, I've taken it to the online. He said, because of the athletes, you know, there's 20 kids in high school. Any of them are going to participate in this, so he didn't want it to allow to end up. And he also mentioned, and I was going to prove it too, if he thought, let's, let's let our churches know, so I can announce it, so elderly people with that. A lot of them, you know, aren't going to get out and say things, and if they do have school kids, you know, it's another. Like saying someone called them, Dan, and said, I have some stuff, but I can't get it for them. That was another reason I was going to say, it's just that the athletic department did not want any of their kids to go into anyone's house or anyone's dog, anyone's backyard. Because if something happened stolen, they did not want me, they didn't want me to keep this. I mean, honestly, I think, you know, up until noon that day. This is 27, this is 4 years, so that's when they're going to start picking everything up. But if people call me at the city hall, I can call it till then. That, that, yes, I did say to put it down, he asked me just to put this stuff, because if they're going to go with the, you know, the trouble of doing this, you know, they don't want 10 people and then someone have to be a activist. They wanted to be more of a city, but he said last time they had lawn boards, they had engines. And he said that was his actual. He said we had to move stuff, I was going to say it was not, the rest of the work. That's what he wanted me to ask. Generally, refrigerators, refrigerators, we can't, we can't make it, maybe washers and dryers. If there is a maintenance, we won't pick up that. There are things that can wash your products. So if we, if we did a stall or something, we need to get that in here. We have a spot periodically, you know, we're not going. We set them up over there where we have our dirt cowl, regions, we set them up there and they'll sit there a few days and next day do their job. So by this, we just have, is that inside the kids? No, we should pitch up. I guess I'll make it certain the kids are out there. But if they don't, you don't want to, or I can push them to have. But no, it's washing products, we're not supposed to give it to a refrigerator. I love the way that whole that making.
Okay, we've got some details to work on, some of this. And I appreciate what all that. Let's, let's have a motion to authorize the city, if we want it and help. All of us, and it's like that today, and I know you're supposed to be working on that. So, and I have a motion to fully support this citywide cleanup on the 28th, 4 to 7. And what I'm supporting, part right up, we get the word out, the jerseys, the other facilities, to have the, to maximum. Cindy gave me a motion, Rubens give a second, we have a motion to fully support the citywide cleanup, it's September 48th, 4 to 7, and what we can do. All in favor? I've got a unanimous, alright. Okay, next item is a discussion and possible action regarding the closure of certain streets along Avenue 8 between 10 and 11. This is the street right in front of your own Sonic Lodge, it's for an event, all of the.
I think it's 15 and 16.
15 and 16. Our agreement, conversation wise, representing Derek Zeller's of the launches, and they own that something out. It was, ours like, comes up. So. They have agreed to pick up barriers, once a day, poison, we use, barriers down, public funds, but extended in that part, over the way it's lined, it's close to the street. They may ask you tomorrow, it'll be their responsibility to pick them up and bring them back. And also, your responsibility, your goodness. Your obligation is all the neighbors on that particular street want to make sure that they help, they can give in and out freely. And that they're, they're supported, that's where that happens, so we are. Supported, at least that's. So.
That was my question, just to ask.
He was going to go to Boris, but I had to. Okay. Yeah. Closing the street, say, as long as they don't have a danger gap this morning. I have a motion, if you're in favor of this. I have a motion to allow the publishers to close that street, as long as the neighbors, for their full access. Make sure they set up their own lockages and pick them back up, they, along the the cones, so. A motion, do I have a second? I have a second, all in favor? You hear that, Charles?
I had one question, how long is it going to be closed this thing?
Friday night is the family event, and Saturday, the day is the close business meeting, is my understanding.
Yeah, I've, I've got one writ property ready in between there, and if I guess someone going to notify all those people who live in there, I didn't hear everything, but I would be okay with me, but long as they're notified.
$48 max, yes, they should be out of there Saturday evening is what they told me.
I guess I will go and clean that lot out in front of it. I was hoping that we had it torn down by the next day.
Oh, you're talking about dentists thing? Speaking of that, Renee and her folks did a wonderful job, Mark Jones' own property. For celebrating, thank you so much. A particular piece of property, unfortunately, we got a poor horse. If you can't, I can't leave him on every morning to them, it's, it's. Ritter, thank you, Renee, she does a heck of a lot for us. Alright. Public comments, limited to three minutes, all public comments will be made relating to the posted agenda items, otherwise cited discretion to the mayor. The council will listen, will not respond. Dan, do we have anybody that signed it?
No, sir.
Are there any public comments? Eric, would you sign something?
Yes.
I think I'm signing, Eric. I think I'm signing.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say, you brought up an agenda item about writing off water bills. There are companies and firms that will buy up the liquid bills, pennies on the dollar, but it would be something. And might be considered rather than writing off everything, passing off on a company.
We do have.
Financially responsible to the city to get something rather than nothing.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Thank you.
I think that should be explored.
We do that with our floor costs and buys and these. Sounds like that, that's a great idea.
It's a company that bought up all the blockbuster fleet fees, they bought it for a penny a dollar, they're still out there trying to.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
Good input. Okay, any other comments? Okay, thank you. Alright, any item, item 14, Deborah, you have one here, any item, once a discussion, but no action taken at this time. It could be used as a gen item. You have a question?
I, Renee, back in June, you had given us mid past June that it will. You had given us a list of the condemned property that had that large, when you had come out, you had contacted them. Can we request you to look at property that we do have? Okay, and then also on we, on the, can I, 90 days, it's, it's. The Joseph Colley Law Office, it says that the violation request has been signed.
I sent you.
And then on the one single. Or maybe somebody wouldn't, there's something.
Deborah, my name is Calvin. Some of that's given, yeah. Because the property deal, the bench on the place, it says Joe Colley, I'm sure. So, you know, it's still, I don't know.
But is the property still being called?
I'm just telling you what the question was.
And then another question I had, Longa, Mrs. Avalo, she gets on the motion, yes. I mean, so that was, they didn't turn, okay, to the him, that was, that was one of my questions. And then some of those are in prison for community, it's the. Okay. I received ones quicker. They have no good to. Well, what happens on the ones that you have, you're saying, no response? Do we just, what, what do you want to do? Well, that's what I wonder, do we send those to our attorney, our attorney to have something? No. It is.
The opening bid of the four six thousand, no, we had poured it down before that. And the bar down. And the real owner was also dipped to six thousand. And that's what they tell us, it all kind of.
But, but that was six thousand. A house. No, it was. And then my other question was, on the properties that we've given them extensions, how, how, I mean, could we? Just like the beginning of my law, there's a house that was tagged on the front door for weeds and stuff. If it's passed at them, I want more. Do we go to the chief race? And either can he or one of his officers goes and rides a salation? And. They hit some judge. And if they judge it before then, then they're good. Okay, what, what if no one lays in that house? Are y'all seeing everything normally about letters to the owners of the house that's all attached, will it tell? Do you know if that's why it happened? Oh, the random problem, yeah. Uh, not yet. Not yet, he has not been, uh, uh, okay, the tag is on the door. Somebody has been, not high found, not. Okay.
So, we're gonna be very well having it. And you know, at next council meeting, when we get it on there, all these.
Well, I can tell you, nothing's happened on here except when fourteen, oh. What is fourteen? Fourteen, it'll be. No. On that list, nothing's happened, so one that belonged to the villa, man, the villa. And they got the roof on, they got the windows boarded, doors. So, he's, he's given another extension to be further worked, he's really with the data, missing. It says on his.
It's on there.
It's unchecked.
Yeah.
He is, he, he hasn't, he hasn't, he hasn't had a date.
I'm not making sure, we're talking about houses.
The night thing is these, you know, houses, not just one. Okay.
Disapproved, they're disapproved.
He doesn't have it during the till, I think in October. Okay, so these that had the works for June. Yes, we've already done all those. Oh, now we're doing again, because they did one that was going to get us all from now. Okay. Like, you have. Yes. And then on those things, I mean, I'll.
I will post the orders.
You can never.
Chief of Police, issued tickets.
So, when it's down, I mean, the tag is long, it's long, how many weeks and crap, so they'll, somebody close up, he didn't know. Maybe we'll just put it on, he's doing the north part, not the same. And, uh, there were some there, it just. So, we didn't know, so all of it's a ghost, it'll come back with them, literally, they'll. To that owner, it's a order, now, so we have.
Property.
Yeah.
Yes, we were taking several steps, it's a, it's a, it's going up pretty steep down step. Got a wall, it's need to keep the place private, get this up.
But there is an alternative, we could, we might sell it, we can, we can, we can respond to the letters, we can send the people out there and vote for them. And try to provide a conference. Yeah, I have a lot to go, that, that, that.
Okay, is there anything, I talked about this the weekend, and they hired a city charter, you know, that's the way. Go to the district, it's going, are they doing? So, if we're really, our company, let's, let's visit all of us. I think that's a great, I have a motion. Alright, so we'll run this on the agenda for a couple of days, before the house is, we have stationed, and then authorize it. Of course, to, um, contract with it, a bit of this property, give us also for all. We had great success, the letters we put out, some of the actually, actually. Properties that had, come down, but importantly, focus on cost, yes, I do, but. Uh, the chief of. It's something, okay. Then, wait, what's the, the discussion that, uh, there, um, there been? What's the difference between, uh, the, the, they, what did you, and, I thought they were here. Listen for.